What's that?
The next meeting is the 25th, I think.
All right. I would just have someone make sure if you need her there.
Yeah.
Uh, Simi Mara.
It's going to be the Northwood Street.
It's up to you guys. I just, uh, she, I thought she had something going on, but...
We may.
Just let me know if it's when Damon comes on.
Who is?
Damon.
All right.
I'm on.
Okay.
All right, attaboy, Damon.
Before we start, if anybody is on the call on a phone, please mute your phone. Otherwise, hopefully, you all can hear me.
Say that again?
So if it's on your phone, on Teams, if you can mute.
Oh, you, you want me to announce that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, not yet.
Beating out.
Hang on, let me go to an actual microphone.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so if anybody is remote on Teams, if you can mute your microphone, or mute your phone, um, so we can avoid the background noise, that would be really helpful. Um, if you have, if we have to mute you, you have to dial star six to unmute. If there's a bunch of noise, we might have to do that.
Now, you open the meeting?
Yep, the meeting's open. Um, I don't know if you wanna just approve the minutes from...
Did you check open the eighth?
I was out on the eighth, so... I can approve the minutes on the 22nd.
I'll look over the minutes after.
Okay. Well, I sent it to you, so if there was any remarks that that's the first time I've done it from...
Well, everybody should have looked them over.
Well, it's the first time I didn't look through here.
Well, you must have done a striking job, then.
I hope so.
I'm gonna reopen the, uh...
Continue with...
Site plan review. I'm gonna continue the site plan review for...
Thirty-five Cape Road.
Thirty-five Cape Road. All right. This is, uh, the new peer review letter I'm marking today. So, Jeff, maybe if you go down, uh... The... Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
For the record, my name is Jeff Lawson with Graves Engineering Worcester. We are, um, peer review consultant for the Mendon Planning Board. Mr. Chairman, um, yes, I did, uh, issue a letter late today. It came out about quarter after five. Um, it was a follow-up review. Um, we received plans last Mar- uh, last week, uh, last Monday. Um, this letter that I issued today was following up on the initial peer review letter that we issued on February 18th. Um, I don't think we need to go point by point through our review letter. I can summarize...
Yeah, please do.
Any, any of our previous review comments where we were expecting either plan or hydrology, stormwater management report revisions.
Yeah.
Uh, those comments have been addressed by way of document revisions, and, um, at this time, um, our previous comments have been addressed, and, and I'm not expecting any more plan revisions to address our comments. Um, beyond, uh, I'll just summarize by saying that both the plans and the hydrology calculations were upgraded, uh, revised, the two stormwater basins were enlarged a little bit and reworked. Um, there was another, a number of other plan revisions made to address various comments. Um, so that, that summarizes all but one point in our, in our letter of today. The last point is actually, uh, an issue that was brought up by Inabutter during the, the meeting on, um, February 22nd, I believe it was.
Yep.
Whereby there was reference made to a 100-foot and 200-foot buffer zone, um, from residential areas to, to a project. Um, I reviewed the zoning bylaw requirement, um, and there's a lot of different finer points that go with it, but in short, Mr. Chairman, I don't feel as an engineer that, that I, I can be making a definitive decision one way or the other about this, and I'd recommend that the, in my letter, recommend that the planning board, if they haven't done so already, perhaps, um, solicit input from the zoning enforcement officer. Likewise, the board could solicit input from, um, town council, um, but I don't feel as an engineer, I'm, I'm in a position to make a definitive decision or a definitive opinion, um, on this.
Okay, um, just to backtrack a little bit, so people who would, you know, just onto, uh, this public hearing, um, understanding what's going on is, in the Highway Business District is a required buffer between commercial lot and residential. Um, and that buffer is 200 feet to the nearest home and 100 feet, um, from the lot line. Um, I did speak to town council, um, and town council, uh, is, uh, is advising, uh, this board that the, the requirement for those setbacks would be by adjacent property. In other words, this gentleman, this gentleman who purchased the property, purchased it buying a commercial lot next to a commercial lot. Um, and, uh, case history has shown that when that occurs, that it generally is the practice of, um, the town who's him, you know, who's managing that, um, that they look at it as, it isn't strictly anything in the commercial area that's within, it, it's done on an adjacent lot basis. Um, so she advised, she felt that the, uh, the way the bylaw is written, uh, currently, unless it specifically addressed it, and this was kinda her point, so we're gonna have to do some cleanup on that, but, um, unless it implied it, it wouldn't be, um, unfortunately, it wouldn't be from any commercial lot adjacent to, but only the foremost adjacent lot. And where this has, uh, lot, uh, commercial land available in between the two, she felt it would be overreaching by the community to, uh, to not allow, to restrict, uh, that, that commercial lot and not the, uh... So, in that being said, um, she did also advise the town that the, the practical use you have for this building needs to go through special permit. She said that, um, you've identified industrial use and has requested that the, that you file for a spe- special permit, that it can't be done at the tenant level, uh, there's no case history at the tenant level, and she said that, that you would have, if you intend on putting industrial, industrial, uh, tenants in that building, you have to apply for that now. Either that or at some point in the future, when you go to put industrial in there, you'd have to apply for special permit. It would only be light manufacturing at this point. Um, so if there's any industrial use, it needs to go through a special permit, and that would be by the applicant. Oh, I'm not sure which way you guys wanna go, whether you wanna apply for that now. We do do site plan and special permit concurrently. Uh, we'd have to reset, we'd have to close this public hearing and open another, but that's what she's, is she has advised, that to move forward, um, that before any tenant is allowed access, that you'd have to buy, any industrial tenant is allowed access, you'd have to apply for a special permit. Balls in your court as far as that's concerned.
For the record, this is Brian Nelson, the Metro's Engineering. Uh, you know, talking with the applicants, and I believe they're logged on to, um, our meeting remotely tonight, so I'll certainly give them the opportunity to speak. John Bozier and Fran Marku are the two principal applicants.
Yep.
I'll let them chime in, but I, I do believe that certainly the tenants that are, as I mentioned at the first hearing, uh, one tenant looking to occupy about 10,000 square feet with a light metal manufacturing facility, and, um, same with the second tenant. So, you know, again, the applicants know the proposed use better than I, but feel it fits more in the spirit of light manufacturing. And again, if, if John or Fran are on, hopefully, they'll have an opportunity to speak in a minute or two to speak a little further to that.
Yeah, our interpretation with the use table, I took a look at that, um, it, uh, really appears to me that this is industrial use. I mean, you're gonna be, have noises that you wouldn't, the, the intention of the light manufacturing, I think, is exactly that. Um, is light manufacturing. You know, it doesn't include running press brakes and all that type of stuff. You're gonna have fluids running in that building. I don't think that's the interpretation of light manufacturing. Um, and from our use table, uh, it fits more into industrial. I mean, it's, you know, I can't make up the, uh, I can't make up the rules as we go along.
I understand.
And I did go over that with council also, and she looked up some stuff on, on, uh, sheet metal fabrication, and I, to her interpretation, probably be most towns label it industrial. And, you know, that's, uh, I think we'd be hard pressed to find someone who didn't label that industrial. I mean, it's support its position.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So if the special permit's applied for, um, basically, does that cover the whole building and the whole property and then...
That is correct.
...nate somebody, you know, another tenant potentially coming in down the road for a, a modification of the site plan?
No, I mean, she said you would do a special permit based on the entire building and as industrial. If you use it for less, you know, that's fine. If you use it for light manufacturing, um, that's a hazard right, so you wouldn't have to... But she, she said with the intention, starting out with a good portion of building, the industrial use, said you would have a site plan review on the entire facility.
Well, I guess I'd look over to, um, our applicants if they're there, if they, um, have the ability to chime in. I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak, if that's okay.
That's more than okay.
Yeah, this is John Bozier, uh, the applicant. Um, I believe at this point, Brian, we'll have council review that because that was not our understanding of what was allowed under that zone. So unless Fran is listening in, unfortunately, Fran's in a complete different location from you and out of the country. My position would be, let's have our council review that and give us, uh, some input on it, unless Fran sees otherwise. Fran, I'll defer to you. Guess Fran's, uh, guess Fran's not there, so... From, from my point as applicant, let's, uh, why don't we table this, and we'll have our council take a look at it, and we'll get back to you.
All right, well, we certainly can continue the, uh, the public hearing on the site plan review until you guys decide which direction you're gonna go in, but at this point, I'm gonna, uh, hear from the community since they logged in. If there's anyone from the community that wants to ask a question or...
Eric Hodge, 3 Bates Street.
Uh, actually, I, I, uh, hold on, Eric.
Sure.
Fran might be on the call if he wants to unmute. Somebody commented.
Skip looking out, King, uh, try to... I was just curious, um, as far as a footprint of the, the proposed, uh, signing, what, what most like?
Oh, the rendering? Yes, they did provide a rendering of the building.
I can do...
And pull it up there.
If that's okay as well. I did bring a bunch of 11 by 17 copies also. I've got extra plans and extra renderings. I've got a bunch of those on my pack. No other questions. You have some other ones as well, so... But basically, based on the rendering, uh, we're showing kind of the long side of the building, the steps and elevation, uh, basically looking with a brick or a stone facade.
Which is what, now, this is...
What are you facing?
This is south.
That's correct.
This is towards the solar.
That's correct. And, you know, basically, the, the ends really either side, uh, won't be much different. Again, I'm looking at basically a brick or a stone facade coming up, basically to the height of the doors and the windows, and then having some siding above that. Keeping in mind, this building at the low ridge is about 18 feet tall, so its presence is... Steps and elevation in two places, um, down a couple feet with each step to, you know, basically run with the land to make it blend a little bit.
Propane would be, you really can't see them here. There would be one up near Cape Road, and then there would be one over, basically across this drive aisle. Uh, the dumpster has been relocated, and if I can just go to this one, actually, would be a better one to show those features. Again, looking at north, going straight up the page, Cape Road over on the west, on the, on the right or the east side. Um, basically, we had the dumpster located here previously, so we've moved that up to, basically centered pretty much on the north side of the building, and again, this is more the, the service side of the building, if you will. Uh, propane tanks, um, off the westerly island here, and then here as well. And again, the propane tanks are underground.
Okay, so that's gonna be a button on the, um, solar field.
The solar field is actually way over here.
Okay.
Uh, there's, I forget what it is, but I think it's, it's easily 250 feet between the back of the building and the property line.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just over 31,000.
And how, um, how wide is that strip of the other property that runs adjacent to that?
This strip is, I believe it's approximately 50 feet. I can scale it if you like.
No, that's, that's fine. Does that answer any questions?
Yeah, if I could get a copy of the handout.
I'll actually, before I leave, I'll, I've got some, so I'll...
And now we'll turn to Eric. Eric, announce your name and address, please.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, Eric Hodge, 3 Bates Street. Um, so for those who aren't familiar, uh, at the previous public hearing, I'd made a presentation regarding the 100-foot, 200-foot buffer under question. Uh, if anybody is interested in looking that up and reading it for themselves, that's Article 3, Section 301(c).
I'll get it real quick.
Bill, I guess my main question is, what's our process for appealing the, the town council's decision on this? From my reading of this, it very clearly defines districts as being, uh, wherever a non-residential district abuts a residential district, a 100-foot buffer from the lot lines and a 200-foot buffer from any residential dwelling shall be maintained. The, the bylaw seems to make a very clear distinction between districts and lot lines here, so I don't understand how the, the, uh, town council can, can make any other determination other than, you know, according to the, uh, the district.
Well, first of all, um, it, um, the process is, if this application was to be approved through, uh, whether it be through site plan or a special permit, um, if it was to be approved, then, um, there's a 21-day appeal period. Now, keep in mind that when we draw up regulations, and this is what, what, um, people really don't understand is, uh, bylaws are only as good as they can stand up in court, as we found out with the adult entertainment, and we've had several other cases through the years where the town has to act reasonably in an approach to an applicant. Um, it's his property, he gets to, you know, the same, you know, the same situations that, um, you know, the same liberties that are provided, provided to anyone else who owns property in the town amended. You know, as long as they're being reasonable. Now, interpretation of reasonable, uh, you know, is up to any court to decide. They could come in and say, well, 200 feet's extremely, you know, unreasonable, 100 foot from the lot line's unreasonable, and they would generally have me, they would send me back our bylaw marked up with the changes they requested, and I'd have to change our bylaw, so it ends up affecting the entire district. So, she generally reaches out more than just our bylaw and looks at what's going on as far as case history. And, you know, if in fact that the applicant is willing to make, to make, uh, attempts to protect your, you know, you guys from, whether it's, um, you know, with the abrevities or additional abrevities, or he's trying to make an attempt to make sure that your property isn't affected, um, that's certainly gonna weigh in his favor, that he's trying to be reasonable in his request. Um, so I tend to caution, and, you know, we talked about this at the last public hearing, I tend to caution when, you know, sometimes bylaws are written and they act as a deterrent, but there's nothing cast and sewn until it goes before a court system, and, um, you know, depending upon what the differences lie between the buffer zone and what, you know, and what the, uh, what the impact on the adjacent property is gonna be, that's what they're gonna look at. And, um, you know, so she's, she's confident that it may get overturned, um, but you certainly have the right to appeal if it does get approved. I mean, we've got a long way to go before that, but, um, you know, I, that would be the option. Like I said, there's a 21-day appeal period, and then you could, then it can be, during that period, there can be a challenge to the...
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate the explanation. I guess my ask would be that the, the board is enforcing the, the, the bylaw as it is on the books, not as it may be interpreted in court later on down the road. My, my concern here is that, you know, any, any headway I give here tonight or, or in, you know, future public hearings is, is impactful, you know, not permanently, effectively, um, and moreover, it should be relevant and, and interested by all other residents in Mendon, um, you know, who also bought the, the Highway Business Zone. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, the, well, fact or not, I guess, but the way that I'm seeing the, the, you know, this buffer zone as being, having written into the, the bylaw was to protect those residents on the border, and for us to kind of just wave our hands because, um, oh, you know, the, the solar company purchased, you know, a small strip of land, uh, you know, directly abutting me, you know, that, that, that's not really in the spirit of the bylaw. Um, moreover, you know, when the, the solar company purchased that land, I specifically asked that question of the board as to whether that, that, um, that, that buffer zone would be maintained, and I was told that it would. Of course, you know, that, that's in the past now, and, and, you know, the solar company now owns that strip of land, so that, you know, um, anyway.
Well, I, I think it comes, this is what it comes down to, Eric. It comes down to, you know, the demands of being reasonable. Now, let's say the buffer was only 10 feet. He didn't, he was 10 feet shy, okay? And the true aspect of the, the, uh, of the, the bylaw that I wrote, and the true aspect, uh, of that bylaw, is that being reasonable denying an application because a guy's 10 feet? We're talking 40 feet here now, but is it reasonable at 10 feet? And it's, it's up to the board's judgment to keep the town out of litigation, that, you know, if we feel that the, all parties are being represented, and that's why I, you know, I thought a communication between you guys and the applicants might go a long way to, to resolving any issues that you have. You know, it tends to make it so we don't end up with, uh... I'll give you a quick story. When I came on the board, there were several cases that were deferred back to the planning board from the courts, that, from the prior planning board. Uh, when I came in, this was a new set planning board, there's really nobody from the prior planning board. I had several cases that were deferred back to us that had issues from the prior planning board that had gone through the court, and the court said, had made determinations and findings and said, you've gotta deal with these. And we did, we did deal with those, but that's what tends to happen when you get, um, either a brothers who appeal or applicants who take litigation, or... So it's up to this board to, to represent the community as best it can without putting your property in harm's way and still being reasonable. So we write bylaws with the best intentions, and I wrote that bylaw, so I know what the intent, you know, the intentions were, but it's also gonna be how these, these things are perceived in, uh, you know, in the scope of the court system. Um, you know, you know, there's, there's huge changes to, um, chapter 48 right now going on where they're going to be, uh, they're driving, um, multiple residents' homes, condos, duplexes, uh, triplexes. I mean, you could end up with that there. I mean, we never know what the, the use is gonna end up being of that property, so it, it kinda drives toward, drive towards... The board has to make the best representation to, to represent you, but, um, you know, some... But, you know, some, I tell people, sometimes it's better to learn what's going there, it might be better than what it ends up there.
I don't disagree. You know, I think that, you know, we've looked at the soccer fields and, you know, that was, that was a, you know, an appropriate use, but, you know, when I've got a steel building, you know, right up against me, that's, that's less than ideal. I don't think it's necessarily a fair comparison to point out, you know, that, you know, what if the, the buffer zone was 10 feet? I'll, I'll throw this back up again briefly, just for those who may not have seen it last time, but the green zone is the 100-foot buffer and the red zone is the 200-foot buffer, you know, as described in the bylaw. And in both cases, you know, the proposed plan infringes upon that. You know, the, the small strip of land, you know, that's below that, you know, is part of that buffer zone, but more than half of that buffer is encroached upon by the proposed plans. And that, that's, that really just comes down to my fundamental issue on this. You know, if, if it was the case that the applicant was, you know, putting a building in and such that the, you know, the full plan was outside of that buffer zone, I'm not sure that we'd be having the same conversation. You know, on some of the plans, there, there's notations at the bottom that clearly indicate an understanding and conformance to other buffers and setbacks. But in here, here was an instance where there was buffers on the books and, and we just chose to ignore them. So I just, I'd like to...
We're certainly not ignoring them. It's, it's a matter of doing our due diligence as a community, you know, going to our council, asking the right questions. And like I said, there may be more questions to ask, and we're, we're ways away from an approval at this point. So I'm sure we'll be taking, I'll be taking further looks. And as a matter of fact, she might end up sitting in on one of these hearing nights, so...
I've said my piece. I'll, you know, I'll turn it over to other residents. You know, I've got, I see a couple of their hands up.
I don't know if you can see, there's three people with their hands up. Tom Morely, Douglas Meredith, and Mike.
Jane Lowell.
What else do we have?
You've got Jane Lowell had her hand up.
Hey, Jane, go ahead, please. Jane, you there?
You've got to unmute.
Still muted.
Still muted.
What's that?
My microphone's muted.
How about that?
There you go.
Okay. Anyway, Jane Lowell, 40 Millville Street. I am not close to this building. I'm not close to this building, but I must say I'm always stunned by the fact that people buy pieces of property, don't what the bylaws are, and then ignoring them, and trying to do something else. I mean, it happens time and time and time again. And, I mean, they buy the, we know what is going on. It's, it's amazing. And the boards go right along with them. I mean, I, I believe it. If I tried something like that, it would not happen. Okay?
I don't think the board goes right along with them, though.
Yeah, Jane, I beg to differ with you, but this board does its homework. I spent about two hours on the phone with council today. She's our representative. You've been involved in town, you know, in the town for quite a few years, and I, I would think you'd be one that would understand that what we write in the bylaws isn't always, you know, the Bible, that it takes interpretation. And as we saw with the adult entertainment, a poorly written bylaw, poorly written bylaw would have never got through this board. Cost down, what, nearly a million dollars?
Well, the problem is, Bill, the problem with that was, it was a finger-in-the-dike situation. It was not a thought-out bylaw. It was not, it was a finger-in-the-dike, these people wanted to do it. That's a complicated situation.
But we had, we had, that wasn't the only one, Jane. I, I've been, I've been handed back several others that Mendon spent, one was $270,000, another one was $90,000. And we just have to be reasonable. If we're not being reasonable, that's when the town, and, and, you know, that's why I go to council with these questions. I don't make these determinations on my own. You can, you can speak to town council. I talk to her often.
I made use of that. Thank you.
It just doesn't push through anything. We've got a long way to go in this hearing. Everybody just needs to be patient. Tom Morely, please.
Hi, Tom Morely, 52 Millville Street. I actually have a two-part question. The first part is, when we pass a bylaw at town meeting, doesn't it go to the attorney general's office for review before it's accepted?
Yes, and so didn't the adult entertainment bylaw get accepted?
Okay. Okay, so, so you're...
Any, any bylaw, Tom, is only as good as, in any zoning attorney will tell you that. But a town, if you read the zoning bylaws, you read our general bylaws, it says right in that, you know, the town, while being reasonable, if you read 48, the beginning of 48 will tell you, you know, the town needs to be reasonable in its, in its determinations. And I'm not saying that, that these aren't reasonable determinations. I said, before we get to a point where whether we approve or disapprove of this project, and I think we're ways away from there.
So, so this, this bylaw was reviewed and accepted by the attorney general, though?
Yeah, I might have come back with a few, I, I can look it up because the town clerk has them. Might have come back, usually they have notes, you know, things to be cautious of. And I, they kept with the town clerk, I can certainly go see them and take a look at it, any notes they had implying, but...
My, my second question is, in the past, when you've had buildings in the highway business district, have you required a buffer before they're built? In line with the bylaw?
Yeah, Jane, yeah, we haven't had that many built that were next to residential, that's a problem.
But the ones that weren't, did you require a buffer?
Well, if it's commercial to commercial, there isn't a buffer.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but there are residential areas abutting highway district, um...
I can't recall if we, if there was anything built next to a residential.
Like the solar field?
Do you have a...
Is there a buffer at the solar field?
Yeah, but that's way away from the residential.
Okay. All right, I just, if, if there was other, others in the past that you've required to have a buffer, a abutted residential, I just don't see what the difference between this and the others is. That's all.
Yeah, and then, not that I'm, not that I'm familiar with, to be honest with you.
Okay, just wondering.
And I could certainly look back and see. The only thing, and that's because it's on a separate bylaw, would be the solar fields, because they have different buffering requirements, because we have a separate bylaw, and that would, that would, because it's in a separate bylaw in the town vote on, that would overreach the highway business district zoning.
Got you. Yeah, thank you.
I see a hand. Do you know who it is? Dan?
It's Bruce. Has his hand up?
Yeah, hi. Hi, Bill, this is Bruce Howe at 5 Joseph Road in Mendon. I'm not in a butter, but I do have a quick question based on an item that the previous speaker raised, which he pointed out that bylaws are submitted to the attorney general for review, and those come back with notes and recommendations. So wouldn't the current bylaw have been written with any of those notes and recommendations incorporated into it?
Well, first of all, in most cases, that's reviewed after we've already, it's gone to town floor and been approved. And some don't come back with suggested changes, they come back with just ancillary comments saying that, you know, this may or may not be an issue. I, I don't, I can't say for sure that, in fact, that they raised any question on the setback of that, of that zoning, but it's certainly something I could look into. But once again, even, even bylaws that the attorney general approves without comments have been contested. I mean, it's, and towns have, have lost. I mean, if you go and look up zoning cases in the state of Massachusetts, zoning cases are, are litigated daily. I mean, there's a lot of litigation on zoning in, across the state, in every state. I mean, it's not just Massachusetts, but in every state. So, once again, it becomes a courtroom interpretation at that point, and that judge gets to make the presiding decision. And his decision stands, as we found out with the adult entertainment. I mean, they basically threw our original bylaw out. I, I had to rewrite, I wasn't on the board when that went through, I had to rewrite that bylaw to their specifications, what they were looking for it to say.
Yeah, right, I understand that, but, you know, the adult entertainment issue is, is pretty, is pretty different from this one. Again, the...
It's not the only one we've had contested in the past.
Sure, yeah. No, I, I think, I think people understand that. I think people understand that, you know, zoning issues go to litigation all the time. I mean, that's, that's just what happens. It's not all, it's not always clear. I think that many of the residents are looking, especially along Edward Road and, and Bates Street, are simply saying that with the information they have at hand, which is what the town has in its bylaw, that it's pretty clear. It's, it's black and white.
You know, and that may be the case, you know, and I'll discuss further with the questions that came up this evening with town council and...
Sure.
You know, and she's our representation. If she, she says, well, there is grounds for an appeal, then, you know, we may be talking entirely different issue. That's why I'm telling everybody, be patient, but it's not like, I mean, I was alive, I lived in this town when Edward Road was built. And this was back when, you know, Mendon was mostly made up of all, for another word, Yankees, farmers. And I remember the opposition at Edward Road, a simple subdivision on a side street. And, you know, it's, you know, people own property with every good intention, they're going to try and utilize that property, and the town just has to be reasonable in assessing its zoning. It's, it's something every town deals with. And, you know, they, once again, I just need everybody to be patient as we go along through this hearing. There'll be further time for further questions. But, you know, there's a lot more information to come out and a lot more information to require from council, and that's why I have it. Like I said, she may be attending one of these meetings, and you can ask her directly.
Well, I, I think Eric already asked for that to happen.
Uh, yes.
And doesn't the town council represent the town residents, or doesn't they just represent the governmental authority of the town?
The only, she's, she's not going to speak to residents in town, because unless you guys are going to pay her bill. She's, she's hired by the town government, so she's going to speak to people within the town government. She'll come to this meeting and you can ask her any questions, and she does represent the town, and she, when she gives advice, it's, you know, on the best interest of the community. It's, there's no vested interest in her. She doesn't, she doesn't even live in this area, so she wouldn't...
Sure, yeah. No, I, I understand, I understand that. So, okay, that's fine, I'm, you know, I'm...
As far as, as far as, I know I've received a couple of emails. I will tell you one thing about me. I don't, I do not have conversations outside of public hearings. You got an application in front of me. If you email me, you're not going to get a response, because that's why we have the public hearing. You're welcome to come, but I need those questions heard within the hearing, so they're all on record.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Anybody else? I'm, I'm fine. Thank you for your information.
You're certainly welcome to send them to me, so I can approach them with council, but I am not, not willing to, you know, respond outside of the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Hey, Bill?
Yes.
Just getting, just following up with this meeting. Is this meeting going to go to, continue it and go and get some more information, and then we're going to come back to it, correct?
It sounds to me from the applicant, is Fran, did Fran ever make it on, or...
No, but I can see John, I think, has his hand up.
Okay.
Centered in the...
John's...
Yeah, I, I've spoken with Fran, and we'd like to proceed with the approval process for the plan as wholesale, manufacturing, and exactly what's allowed in the zoning.
Okay, so at this point in time, unless you came back for a special permit at any time, we will not expect any industrial use on that property.
That's correct, and we'd like you to proceed to look at what we've presented, and if it's not acceptable and we haven't answered the questions of the board, then please provide us with a denial, so that we can move forward.
Well, yeah, I, I would like to continue this to the next meeting, so I could have further discussion with council, and maybe have her in the room at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's a 20 sec.
From, from our position, you know, we've spent a considerable amount of money, we're up against some deadlines here. We do have other tenants that we can place in the building that meet to the exact definition of the zoning. We'd move on to them. We also have...
As far as I'm aware, we still have a setback issue that I need to discuss with council. If you, if you're looking for either approval or denial, you know, with, I think, you know, I need council's further input.
Okay. We've, we've also provided you with a letter from council. We've had this reviewed by two of our outfits that work for us, and we've provided you with a letter from one of our councils concerning that issue.
All right, let me take, I presume it's in this package?
Left a couple extra copies up, right over to the left there. I've got plenty in my bag here, but it's that one right on top, yes. How about she's up?
All right, reading to the record, the applicant's representative, looks to be, got to put my glasses on, excuse me. Rubenstein Associates, 10 Speed Street, first floor, Framingham, Massachusetts. Date of march, to the Mendon Planning Board, permitting at 35 Cape Road. Says, dear, dear sir and madam, I have been asked to review and render an opinion on the need for compliance with regard to Section 301(c) XV of the Town of Mendon zoning bylaw as it relates to the property, property to the east of Cape Road, of 35 Cape Road. The specified zoning... The specified zoning law is not applicable and does not abut the property to the east. Instead is abutted by a different law, which is also zoning highway business, as it does not abut the law in question. The bylaw is not applicable unless, yeah. Well, I've got to, one thing I didn't want to address with Council this morning was the fact, can you give me the zoning book, please?
Oh, I didn't bring it tonight.
You didn't bring the zoning book?
No.
Jeff has his.
Thank you, Jeff.
It's got to be at every meeting, Gail.
Yes, I know.
All right. Believe the note that Eric was talking about was in regards to, I think it's section 201.
Hey, Bill, it's, it's section 301?
Well, I think the, hold on one second, Eric. Now, that's where I was at. He's citing section C-XV.
Yeah, item one.
The stats over here, oh, item one. He doesn't cite section one, he cites the following buffer screening. Oh, yeah, he does, actually. He, he cites the whole section. Item number one, and, and this is what I need to go over with Council, is wherever a non-residential district, abuts a residential district. Now, discussed that in, in some, some length this morning with Council. And, but I, I wasn't speaking in terms of districts. So I just want to get clarification from the Council. He doesn't, your representation doesn't provide a lot of support for, you know, what item one says, other than the fact that you feel you meet the requirement. But it does, item one, you know, it, it says whenever a non-residential district abuts a residential district for 100-foot buffer from the lot lines and 200-foot buffer from any residential dwelling should be maintained. Once again, this is one of those items that definitely needs further interpretation. So if it's, you know, if in fact case law is, you know, is regarding abutting property and not the entire district, that's up for Council to make that determination. But I, I would have to go back to Council to get that information. I mean, if, if pressed for denial, I mean, I don't speak for the entire board. If the entire board has further questions it wants to ask, you know, I'm only the chair. So it'd be up to the, the entire board to make that decision. Or you could place it on a vote, but I'm not comfortable until I talk to Council. And like I said, I can have her in the room at the next meeting on the 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way that you can present this conditional to clarification by Council so that we narrow this down to?
Yes, I, yeah, I'm going to provide her your letter of representation. I'm going to specifically outline section one and tell her I need a determination on what, you know, what her feelings are regarding whether it's a districting issue or adjacent property issue. Unfortunately, the zoning bylaw is not clear enough now that we've run into this issue. So it'll be her determination and I'm going to ask her for a recommendation to, to update the bylaw so we don't run into this in the future.
One, one more point, if I could, Mr. Chairman, John Bozier, again, from Aris Construction. We, we have dealt with zoning issues in a number of areas. And one thing that we found in this that's a bit ambiguous and maybe something that you can look at is if you are truly looking to protect residential from commercial or from highway district, clear language as in a no-touch 200-foot buffer zone would be very desirable. I know as a resident to an industrial, that's what I'd like to see, is just a clear definition of buffer. Just my two cents on it. Clarity always eliminates all the ambiguity. And from a developer's point of view, you know, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars when we come into a town. We look to bring the commerce in. We look at the reasons why these zones are created. Obviously, it's our assumption you created the highway business zone to alter your tax structure and bring dollars into the town. Yet here we are, after spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it seems as though it is not something that's welcomed in the town. So from our point, if we can get you to provide us with some definitive language on your position, that would be great. And then we'll move forward accordingly.
Is this the information for your representative attorney? You said you had two letters, but is this the gentleman who's going to be representing that I could have Council speak to?
Yeah, I believe that's probably the, the best point of contact right now.
Okay, well, I, I will throw this letter to her. And I will ask her to have a conversation. And I will ask her to, you know, to direct this board in a, you know, in a way that represents both the community and the applicant. Because in the end, that's what any board should be trying to do. And I think that's what this board tries to do. But we'll, we'll, you know, that's, that's, I think that's the best way to handle it. And then who knows, maybe we can get this all wrapped up on the 22nd, one way or the other. But at least if the, if Council's talking to somebody, they can advise them what her feelings are.
Sure, I, that would be great. If we can, if we can move towards some sort of end-all by the 22nd, that would be good from our end. And just understanding, you know, our position is to come into a town and bring something that is desirable. We're not coming in to have a battle over what we want to do. And obviously, if it's something that the town doesn't want, the residents don't want, then of course, we don't want to be there. But we certainly wouldn't be spending money to each other.
We obviously designed that, that district with the best intentions of driving, you know, commercial business to Route 140 for the best of the community. Because people don't, you know, sometimes the community doesn't understand you assemble your uses in the same area. And when I came on board, we didn't have a use table and we didn't have a desired location. I mean, we had commercial operations all over town, even in our residential districts. This is, everything was done by special permit. So I quickly put together zoning bylaws that represented the community with putting uses where they belong. And one of the intentions was to maximize the use up on 140. With that being said, we also instituted some of these setbacks to protect our community, you know, our abutters from any undue nuisance. And I think, you know, it's difficult sometimes to this board to, to, to make that representation. And, you know, a lot of times we write bylaws as a deterrent, knowing that if it gets challenged, you know, it's dependent upon the judge it lands in front of. And it, so, you know, it, we try to get all potties to work together. That's why I said at the last meeting, if the abutters and the applicant could work together. I always suggest that before any application becomes a, have you talked to the abutters? And, and I thought that, you know, people who generally deal in that and when they know they're up against residential, I know many of the prior applications before this board have done that. They go out and, and they engage the community around them prior to submitting the application so we don't run into these situations. But for whatever reason, apparently, that didn't occur. And it'll be left to the board to make final decision whether the town's being reasonable or not and whether we're representing the community as a whole entirely. Certainly, we want commercial dollars in there. Does it need to be a 31,000 square foot building? Can it be a 26,000 that allows you to meet the setback?
Well, we, if I could, if I could speak to that, we, we on several occasions reached out to try and get an ITR meeting. And I understand with COVID, it's been difficult for everybody to get together. But we did start some five or six weeks before we even engaged this property to see if we could get some sort of a technical review and discuss any of the possibilities with no response whatsoever. So with the amount of time that we had and our business being one where we needed to move forward, we went with the application, which was our last resort. So that's why we're where we are today. Unfortunately, we felt that we met all of the, the needs of the bylaw and we felt that we were within the right. Evidently, what I'm hearing is we're, we're not falling within our rights under the zoning. So I guess that's where we're, we're going to have some difficulty. But I do appreciate it if you'd review it. Of course, we'll go forward for the 22nd. We can bring Council in and have Council speak with your counsel. See if we can come with, come up with some sort of amicable resolution to where we're at right now. I know reducing the size of the building, given the cost escalation in lands, makes this pretty much prohibitive. So, and you're, you're going to find that anywhere with, with, with the way that the market's going, it's hard to develop, so.
I know, I understand, I understand.
We'll work with you, Will. We'll see what we can do. And I appreciate anything you can do to get Council in touch with ours and see if we can come up with some sort of a resolution here. I thank you for your time.
You too, thank you very much. Do we have any more questions?
Yes, we have Douglas Hart, 7 Bates Creek.
Yes.
Similar to my question last time, I'm looking at the bylaws in a table of uses at page 25 and 26. And I believe we were talking about dropping down from light manufacturing or industrial to more business or retail use, which in line 56 on page 26 calls for a special permit for 10,000-plus square feet, similar to the industrial in line 59. So I was wondering if that would mean that this would have to come under a special permit even with business or retail use?
Actually, we require a site plan review, I mean, special permit anyways because of the size of the building area.
And then just some other general questions I had. How would I obtain copies of the Attorney General's review of the bylaws? Would I send a request?
Ah, you would, I would probably send a request to Town Clerk, they should have them on file.
Okay. Would that be the same with?
Yeah, Town Clerk usually retains, because she's the one that interacts with the Attorney General. So Town Clerk usually retains those records.
And the same would be for the, the meeting minutes or recording of the meeting?
I'm sure we have a meeting minutes and they're probably archived at this point because that was, oh, those are town meeting. That was, those were approved at town meeting. You talking the zoning bylaw itself?
I was thinking, yeah, the zoning bylaw itself and then just the last meeting we had concerning 37 Cape Road in this one. You know, if it's recorded and I could get a recording, get a transcript or whatever, I don't know how you, how you work that out.
I believe Dan could, could probably send you the transcript.
The recordings of these meetings are on the Town YouTube channel.
On the Town YouTube channel.
I'll put the link in the chat.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And who is the Town Council? We've talked about her a lot, I just don't know who it is.
Cindy Omara, but please don't contact directly.
I understand.
It's
Did you say Cindy Omara?
Mara. Good land use, uh, land use attorney and she represents the town well. In my 12 years of sitting on the board, she's been the best council we've had.
And I apologize, Bill, I didn't get the last name, was it Omara?
Amara, A-M-A-R-A.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Last question I'm taking on.
I'm good, thank you very much.
Uh, just one comment and one question. Um, the kind of this bylaw, it seems like this gentleman, I feel for his fees and whatnot, as he it seems like he's trying to rush this through the process. I would hope we let the process plan.
Certainly, if he's only doing a site plan review, at this point, I think we've, we've got all the information we need for a site plan review, other than the setback issue. Uh, well, since they removed the exit from Great Street, there really isn't Um, you know, I generally, the last time we had a traffic impact study on that was another property further down and there was little, pretty much little or no impact at the time. It is a state road, so it's come by the state, it's made to handle traffic. We could, you know, I don't see it as a situation where the town needs to require impact study. Only because 140, you know, most of the time isn't, you know, a traffic haven. So we generally, we don't force people to, we waive the impact study requirement unless we feel it's, you know, there's definitely going to be an impact to traffic. You know, this is going to be small trips, probably, most likely employees. So I think that impact to the property is going to be minimal.
Okay, because it seemed to be
Well, I was concerned about the exit onto Bates. I mean, obviously, we all know what that, that intersection can provide. So they moved their exit away from Bates. And they were given a curb cut from master DOT, so they obviously don't feel there's any issues with it. But I don't think the, this type of use wouldn't generally require an impact study.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road to March 22nd at 7:05.
No, you can't do 7:05, we have another public hearing at that time.
How would you like? What would you like?
For, uh, what do you think?
Can you start them all at 7:05, Bill?
We just set it for 7:30, and then...
Do 7:30?
Yeah, if it runs, if we run, if it starts late, it's okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I want to check with the town.
Oh, you can, but we try to give the, you know, you don't want everybody showing up, and then they gotta wait an hour and a half for the, for the next hearing, so.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion again.
Okay, go ahead.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road, site plan review for March 22nd, 7:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Lambrosino, aye.
John Vansus, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rest now.
John, him, somebody.
I'll take that.
Mr. Chairman, are you all set with me, sir? Uh, yeah, I guess.
Thank you.
Jeff, things are showing up. Unless you want to sit around him.
No, I can't make it in 20 seconds.
Oh, okay.
Bill, I can't be here in 20 seconds.
What's that?
Won't be able to make it in 20 seconds.
I think, I think all your works. Jeff, I think all your works.
I could so too.
That's up to your request.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
I'll be sitting in another meeting.
Yeah, it's interesting.
You know, you got these old, you know, men that just think that every board just pushes stuff through, they don't.
Eagle ram, cave.
What are you going to make?
Oh, okay.
I can just stop right there.
Good property, all that stuff, too.
Hey, gentlemen, is that a copy of the entry?
Um...
So I need them to put in the file.
All right, hold on a second. This is Maury Street. Yeah, which lot? There's one or two.
So 40 Maury is the existing lot, the house on it.
Okay.
The proposed lot was a variance lot that's went to the ZDA and recording information.
This was the existing lot, anyway.
With the house on it and...
Oh, oh, okay. All right, we are reviewing the...
No, it's just one lot, that's...
All right, sit down.
Thank you.
I've held this meeting enough time.
My pleasure.
One P in front of us for...
43 Maury.
Randy Nettle, 43 Maury Street.
Okay.
And we have been provided copy of a variance lot in lieu of the property having a shortage of 24 feet of the frontage. Everything seems to be in order as far as the variance. It's recorded, it's on the plan, all other dimensional requirements are met, and it's an oversized lot of 1.9 acres. So I think we're, I don't have any issues with it. Does anybody else have any questions? And then I think we're all set.
Make a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I can make a motion to approve lot number two, has a 176-foot frontage on 47 Maury Street.
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Yes, this is forty-three.
Okay, every second.
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Lambrosino, aye.
John Vansus, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
All right, put that to a, to rest.
Sign that tomorrow.
Okay.
No, I'm only doing one.
Oh, I thought you...
That's what I said, that's what I said, I was just doing one. Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't need it.
Okay.
Maybe I should rethink those nomination papers.
Did you sign, Barry?
I will.
Oh, thank you for it, right? Let them go first.
I'll tell you what would be...
Yeah, that you can sign.
I would do every meeting break in this, because nobody else knows zoning regulation.
That'd be determined after, from the zoning official, the use.
What's that?
Wouldn't the zoning official determine the use at the time of a tenant comes in?
Well, that's what I said to the council, and, and, you know...
Can we talk about this? I know, because this...
No, building, she, she said if they're intention going in, it's industrial, you know, industrial use, she said, it's got to have a site plan, a special permit now. They're going to label it light manufacturing, but still, it does require a site plan, a building over 10,000 square feet, so.
Right.
And they missed it, I missed it, so. Hey, you got a... It is like when I showed up here where you...
A part-time town planner would be good.
Yeah, yeah, this is my guy, shut up. He designs zoning, but, you know, there's now like 70, you know, catch everything.
Five half of that?
I'm only doing one.
No, just one. Just one. Not doing the half of that.
Need four. That's one, I don't have to do many of them.
And this is John.
Hello. Thank you, my guy. See you guys.
Yeah, okay.
Damon, don't forget to come in and sign tomorrow.
You're going to forgive me? No, it's happening. Okay, Jimmy, thank you.
He'll be in here signing tomorrow, so you're just going to take it?
No.
All right. No, it's only 81P, so it doesn't require.
Damon, you don't need to come in.
But, uh...
Okay.
These plans are each...
Thirty-five, back, those are the...
All right, let's go, let's keep this meeting moving. All right, so what's next on the agenda here? Hold on.
It's the only thing that's left on the agenda.
All right, he's got the, John, there's a couple different issues going on here. Are you going to, which one are you going to do first, Hillman?
A and R plan.
Okay.
The approval not required.
No, you can do that after.
You want to do that last?
Yeah, let's get through these other things.
All right.
Oh, you need the A and R for the open space?
Yeah, I wanted to show, yeah, I wanted to do the A and R and then show you where that fits into that, that's why. But that's fine.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
I'm just going to disclose that any questions or anything that I might ask or voting that I do with this, on this particular plans of either one of these applications, I do business with the, the owner of the properties on other businesses that he has, so I just need to disclose that.
Okay. Last, so you abstained from any voting, Damon?
I just have to disclose that I do business...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, seriously, you're killing me.
All right, so we have an A and R plan, for those who want to, what an ADP, your A and R plan is approval not required, which generally means the lot meets all dimensional requirements and is subject to be in a house lot. So, which one are we looking at here?
We're looking at lot one. So that's, this is an adjacent to family house on 29 Halford Ave, with two bonds. We're going to be cutting out a conforming lot with 3.2 acres around it, lot width of 4.6 feet. It's all 500 feet, and the width, the width of the...
How much upland? I don't see it marked.
Ah, it is, it's right over here on the, there's a table on the right.
Oh, way over there.
Yeah. Upland of lot one is 93,612 square feet.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Nine thousand required for a duplex.
Yep, yep. How much frontage do you have here? I see 27885.
No, it's more than that. It is, hang on, you know to have it on the open space.
Well, it's still, oh, that's to station here, but he doesn't, he marks it only to here.
No, it's 278 plus 248 plus 340 plus 48, no, yeah, plus 4883. Hang on.
Who are you talking?
How the hell you seeing all that?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm looking at the open space.
Yeah, you're looking at the open space.
Not my idea.
How we show you?
You know, tally bakers rule.
It's minus 58, yeah, so this one's 58, 53, plus 278, plus 248, plus there's a little, oh, no, that's a 248.
Yeah.
So it's like...
So the station is station, station is station.
Yeah, yeah, so it's from the beginning of the curve to here, here to here.
All right.
Yep.
Gotcha. But you couldn't make that any easier than that?
I didn't, I didn't finish the plan.
John, where is the existing house on this? Is that...
Right here.
Oh, that's the house right there?
That's the house right there.
Yeah, so the house is right here, and then the two bonds, yeah.
So it meets all dimensional requirements for the town regarding a duplex, so it, I don't see any issues, proper upland, wetlands are marked. Anybody else have any other questions? If not, I need a motion.
Is the, the access is on the left side here?
Yeah, so there's an access in utility easement, which will be part of the road.
Yeah.
We come in with the subdivision, which...
Well, the access to this is probably going to be right out the front.
It's right where the access is.
Yeah, but I want to see where the access is to the back.
Oh, yeah. Have a good night.
Yeah, so, the lot, and the road, did an accessing, accessing utility easement here.
How wide's your access?
Uh, it's 50 feet, yeah.
Okay.
And then we left a temporary construction easement, 25 feet wide along the whole lot for when we do that.
Yep, yep. Yeah, no, the, dimensional requirements are met, access is obviously not an issue, those are the two most, the two biggest requirements for the, for an 81P, and both of them met, so I don't, there are no issues with the plan.
To approve the 81P for, you call this lot one?
Yeah, lot one.
Lot one of 35 to 37?
No, 29 Halford Ave.
29 Halford Ave.
29 Halford Ave West, lot one.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Lambrosino, aye.
John Vansus, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Okay, that's, I was wondering.
I don't have to abstain, I just had to, I just had to disclose.
Yeah, yeah, right, unanimous.
Four?
Pardon?
Four, seven are all over there, I can take those, here you go.
Yeah, I just need, you just need four.
You only have two, four.
Yep. And there's, there's three formates to sign, John.
Three for me?
Yeah. Yeah, so John needs one back, and two for us.
My lot. Actually, this, the first one, you...
I'll let them gang up over there.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, sorry, means only an 81P.
Oh, he doesn't have to sign.
So we're going to do an open space subdivision on the lot.
All right, I want to move this motion, so...
What happened to the thing?
Let's get down to the open space subdivision.
So I'm here tonight for the pre-submission meeting, they recommend doing a pre-submission meeting to discuss with the board what they would like to see for an open space subdivision. I have some questions on pavement width and things like that.
Do you have a copy of the plan?
I will, I'm going to pass them out right now.
Where's it going?
All right, the same, the same lot that you were just looking at, the rest of the land there, there's approximately 35 acres there.
Yep.
So that's about the, what would be the potential subdivision? And this is what we would like to do with an open space subdivision.
Hey, Drew?
This is just like a pre-submental meeting, I wanted to talk to the board. I submit, I'll bring in all the packages that I have.
If this property is there to... This is up in the old Orchard Beach here, gone out of control.
John, you need my lot?
Because we have a pre-submental on open space plan, I'd like to advise the board before we get moving. Over the past few weeks, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the changes to chapter 48. The state is revising chapter... The state is revising Chapter 48. They're looking at, um, they're looking at changing the, uh, the environment of single-family dwellings to multifamily dwellings. Um, this has been going on for some time, but 48 is finally being revamped. So, and one of the hazard rights will be open space. This development. So, we're probably gonna see a lot more of this stuff coming down hazard right out. I'll begin with Town Council to review our zoning book and make sure it's up to, uh, up to the sniff test and that we get that, um, we get those areas covered, but I think going forward, we see a lot in the open space. We're gonna see a lot of multi-unit, whether they be condos or buildings with multiple residential. So Fire Chief, you may wanna, um, be prepared for that. There are a lot of changes. Now, we're not all set in stone yet, but they are going to be very soon. And it just, uh, this started back five or six years ago under the prior administration. Sort of got slowed down a little bit in the recent past administration, but is now being pushed heavily in the state of Massachusetts. Is looking fondly on that. One thing that helps mend it is the lack of public transportation, believe it or not.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
Hey, on this, on this open space subdivision, um, just so that maybe John will even, when he, while, when he is doing something down the road with this, if it does get approved, um, due to the situations we're having with Pond Street.
Yes.
They wanna definitely think about not taking over the town-owned property until the end. I know things have changed over in the past, uh, but that's definitely becoming a problem over there. Taking the land before the subdivision is, is, um, taken over by the town and all the issues that we're at, you know, you know what's going on over there.
Yeah, and I think we're looking within the open space bylaw, um, there's a few issues, um. I think, I think one thing the town's gonna look for upfront is the, before it's, you know, it's built, is it gonna look for the MOU in order? And that the town has the funds available to, you know, we're probably gonna ask for like some type of retainer on the funds, uh, cause the developers are responsible for the cost of all the legal fees and, and Metacomet charges. So, I may just start putting the, uh, and it'll be, you know, we'll put it in a revolving account or something. Uh, probably like 20,000 just to make sure we can get it all. But, uh, yeah, it's something, uh, cause we ran into a little bit of trouble on the last couple, and I wanna eliminate those issues.
The town doesn't take the land over right away, and there's an issue at the end, it can be resolved very easily before the, before the road gets.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, this is kind of a new development thing. I mean, I think the developers themselves could do a lot to, uh, prevent their issues. You know, but with that being said, I agree, you know, we should do it right at the end, once the ASBIL is completed.
Sounds good.
Here, and then up? That's up one?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, good, all right. All right, and where's the open space up one?
Okay, you wanna look at the conventional one first, or the? Do you want, do you want, I was gonna give you the conventional one first, that's the conventional one.
Yeah, this is conventional, okay.
I just wanted to show what we did.
All right.
We want, we want the road through the existing crossing.
Next question I would have?
Yeah.
Is if you could run the conventional by Jeff also.
John?
Make sure.
Yeah, so I'm gonna come in with a submittal of the conventional and the open space. So this, I wanted to talk to you and show you what I was doing.
I just, I'm sure what you're calling eight lots is what he'd call eight lots.
Yeah, and I'll have an official submittal with the conventional and the open space. So, so I just wanted to show the board what I was doing. So this is the, this is the road we're proposing. It pretty much follows this blue line, which is the existing copath on site. I tried to keep it as close as possible to the copath that's already there.
Yep.
Some of the places, like right in here, this curve was too sharp to follow, so we brought it up and around with the correct curve radiuses. Uh, we've tested all these lots, we've done deep tests and perk tests on all these lots, they've all, um, they've all passed the testing. Uh, it was like five-minute to 12-minute perks on all the lots, which was really good for mending. Um, it was pretty consistent soils all the way through the whole subdivision. If we were to do this, we would eat up the whole posse, we would have a wetland crossing here and a small wetland crossing here where the copath goes across. Eight total lots, it's seven total lots in the subdivision, not eight, because this front lot is an A and R lot.
Oh, you're in the, you're, you're still in the conventional?
Still on the conventional. So, I do have, I do have a lot dimension table on this with all the frontages, widths, areas and upland areas to show that all the lots meet. Um, and when I submit the packet, I'll submit this with it for Jeff's review.
Yep.
Uh, then on the open space subdivision.
Do I catch the lines run through here?
Um, yeah, they're down here, they run right here.
They run that way, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, Jim, no.
Um, this is, this is the open space plan where we've, um, we've shrunk everything down, we've made smaller lots, um.
What's the average size lot here?
So if you look over at the lot dimension table, um, it has all the areas. Total areas are 220, 250, 157, 236, 193, 203, 191. That gives us upland areas of 153, 131, 91, 136, 92, 158 and 152. All plenty big enough. Wait a minute, that's not right.
I think you needed to do this plan, uh.
No, that's correct, that's correct. So, so, um, we've shrunk the road down from 2,500 feet down to 1,100 feet.
Oh.
Um, we've left access to our upland, so we have an upland, an open space. Upland B, which is all contiguous from the back down along the side into the front. And then an open space A, which I've left open with a 50-foot strip for the abutis on one on the left side also, to keep, leave that open space. Um, the total open space is 23.24 acres. The total area for the entire lot is 35.89 acres. Um, that ends up, I believe the percentage open space, I see it's wrong on that lot area, but it's over here. Uh, I believe it's 64.75% open space for the entire subdivision. Um, we're hoping, I know, this is one of the discussions I wanted to have, whether it's better for the open space to go to the town. I know the Metacomet Land Trust owns the abutting posse. I did this within.
Well, I, I will tell you this, Metacomet will not take possession until, um, you know, we can move through the MOU process with Metacomet. I mean, that's more ands or yas, but, um, they, uh, they won't take possession till, you know, the ASBIL's done and they're assured that.
Yeah, so I did leave them access at the end of the cul-de-sac and then a strip that comes down, and they're able to access the upland up here, which is almost 11 or 12 acres.
Now, where is this on the end?
Yeah, so right at the end between Lots 7 and 8, I've left them access to get to the back. I made sure I left them access to get up and through the high ground and the west to begin to the, uh, to be able to do a hiking trail or whatever up to the.
Yeah, do you, uh, do you have any type of parking or?
Well, if.
I mean, the zoning bylaws, zoning bylaw requires, I mean, that's all, open space bylaw.
So if they combine it with theirs, they have plenty of land up there. That's what I was thinking, cause they don't have access to theirs right now.
Well, they asked that the applicant produce their parking area.
Okay, so I have plenty of room up there.
Well, my question is, why didn't we provide access here instead of make it load and around?
Access where?
Here.
Because this is all.
Oh, I gotcha.
So there's a copath now that, that runs down.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
So what I did is I, I made the lots.
I think it's more of an oxen path, but.
No, it's pretty, you can drive it, it's, it's driving.
I've driven it on my four-wheeler.
Have you?
My house isn't that far.
I've driven down all the way to, I think, right to here.
Excuse me, I know this isn't open for public discussion yet, but this is Patrice from Metacomet, and this is the first I've seen these plans. So I, please do not discuss what Metacomet will do or won't do, because we have not seen this before.
I was just saying, we'd like to give it to Metacomet, and I, and I did discuss that with you at the Conservation Commission meeting that we had.
For five seconds, that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I understand that, and I'm not discussing it. This is a, a pre, a pre-meeting prior to me to submittal, and I said I would like to give it to you. That doesn't mean you have to take it. I thought it would be good because you own the abutting posse. You can keep it in the homeowners association or see if the town would like it. Those are our options, our three options. And I'm fine doing either one of those. This is why we're having this, uh, this meeting right now to talk about this stuff.
We'll get to that point when we need to. That has not, that's not.
The application, uh, Patrice, the application needs to come in first, but I think before we get to that point.
Right, but I, I heard you saying that we wouldn't take it until a certain point and talking about having access to our land, which we have no plans to develop. So, um, a lot of assumptions are being made.
Well, it is not, I don't think I was talking about access to, to, you know, to, to, if you were taking it. I was asking them why they provided access at this location, and it's the only available location for them to provide access. So, I mean, I'm more concerned that we don't end up with a situation like we had before. Cause the.
Metacomet's not the only one.
We'll deal with that afterwards, um, you know, it, uh, once again, when Jeff reviews it, if there's any issues.
But like I said, I, I was only thinking about Metacomet, cause they're, they're our direct body.
You know what, the town can put it into its, to its own trust if it wants.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, it's up to the community, um, to be honest with you, and handles most of the conservation restrictions, so, with, with, um, conservation, so, I mean, whether it goes to Metacomet or the town takes it in trust, uh, or they don't take it up. I mean, that's entirely up to them.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, so.
It's not a planning board issue.
Right.
Is my point.
So, um, as you can see in the, in the lot dimension table, you can see, um, the frontages are all quite large and.
Yeah, I don't see any issue, it looks like total acres, uh, my total last square feet, um, you've met all those requirements. Coupled by the hairy chinny-chin-chin, but, um, for the most part, they're, you know, open met, so. I don't see a particular issue, uh, as far as an open space development, um.
So what I wanted to talk about was lot width, so we, we don't intend on having this road turned over to the town. This would be a homeowners association with the road.
Okay.
So, I want, it's great that the Fire Chief is here tonight. Um, I wanted to get some input on pavement width. This is gonna be country drainage, so there won't be a curbing, there'll be drainage along the edges of the road, um, as the bylaw states.
It's gonna be low-impact development?
Low-impact development. So I was thinking 22 feet of pavement, um, I don't know if that's enough for the Fire Chief, uh, with 100-foot turnaround pavement, 50-foot radius turnaround at the end, which is, is 100, I left that. But I was, uh, thinking that, to, you know, to minimize the previous area, um, I know we could, you could probably get away with 22 feet for eight lot. I mean, it's seven lots really is what it is.
Yeah, this is my first of seeing this particular subdivision.
Yeah, and it hasn't been submitted yet, this is just a pre-meeting.
Some of the considerations I have when reducing the width of a roadway is, um, obviously we don't have municipal water up there. And in most roadways, we need to run tankers, so I'm really not in favor for running tankers, other than wider road width. If bigger system or in, so we don't have to do the running of, of, um, tankers, then, then I would be open to, to discussing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, in a lot of zoning we have now, Bill, um, the state has gone for a push for low-impact development. Less previous area, um, you know, instead of, uh, stormwater drains, they're trying to shed off the material from the road and, and stuff like that, so, that's been, you know, something we've been looking at on these smaller roads, um, is a narrow footprint, because that's what low-impact. I mean, I've got, I've got CM RPC telling me, you know, like, they get some towns that are proving like 18 feet, you know.
Well, and, no offense to those engineers or the environmentalists, but they don't have to worry about putting the fire.
Absolutely, I agree, I agree. I mean, this board generally doesn't go, we have 28 feet in our zoning bylaw. In these low-impact development communities, I think we look around 24 feet, I don't know if that's, uh, 20, between 22 and 24, depend upon the, uh.
And some of that'll depend on, um, the size of the buildings as well. I mean, you talk about going to, to multiple occupancy buildings, where you're now creating more square footage within one building, which is more that theoretically can burn.
Do you have a size it gonna be?
Um, so, I believe, I believe that they're, um, 30, um, by basically 30, almost a square for each dwelling unit. So that would be 60 by 60 and a one-car garage attached to each end. So another 18, so they'll be almost, uh, I think about 90 feet long.
Yeah, so you start to get into a bigger building, square footage wise, and what, so it's 30 by 90?
Yes.
Then how many stories?
Uh, so it'll be just 30 by 30 and 30 by 30 section will be two stories, so each living unit between 1,500 and 1,800.
Okay.
And then a one-car garage on each side, so about 3,600 plus the two garages.
Okay.
Also, in not single.
Yeah, that's.
Big enough duplexes.
You duplexes.
I mean, so I, I just have to let everybody know, that lot dimension table on, uh, on the open space plan is wrong. I don't know how, should've got changed, it's the same table that's on the first one. So the, just so you guys know, the open space lots, um, they don't all meet the 300 feet and the 90,000. The idea of.
Well, yeah, the open space allows for, uh.
I believe the smallest one would be 76,000.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Um, which is.
That's reasonable.
Is very big, and I think the, the, the smallest one of upland is right around 60,000 square feet of upland.
Okay, that's the smallest one.
That's the smallest one, and they're all bigger from then.
Yeah, they'll.
Lot 7 and 8 actually, I believe, meet the zoning and then.
Well, that's the idea of the open space development, so.
Yeah.
Hey, John? Uh, on, on this homeowners association, are they gonna have a shared septic system, design for this whole place, or?
Each lot, each lot will have its own septic system, each duplex.
One well for each side?
The HOA, I think, is more prevalent to the buildings, uh, probably.
Um, so we've tested each lot, we're able to put a leaching field on each lot, um, and they'll, I think they're only gonna be two-bedroom units each side. So it'll be four bedrooms, it won't be any larger than a regular, single-family septic system. And, um, yes, each, each lot will have its own well.
One well's gonna share both units over there?
Yes, yes.
Same thing with the septic?
Same thing with the septic. One septic system.
Will be a homeowners association for the road and for the, for each house will have, how's that gonna work, condo them or what are they gonna do?
Um, yeah, so the duplexes will be, they'll be condoed anyway, they'll have, they'll have a homeowners association for you, like a condo association. But it's, and then the homeowners association, so yeah, they're basically gonna be condos, but that'll be, they'll, they'll own exclusive rights to the. So each, each own. So each owner on each side will have exclusive use of the lot floor. Each, the two units on lot two will have exclusive rights to lot two.
So the overall HOA, what's that for just drainage upkeep?
Homeowners Association would be for upkeep of the road, plowing, any drainage. It's not going to be for maintenance of the houses.
Okay, I got you.
Once the roads approved, the town would take care of the plant.
No, so we're not planning on having it go, we're not approving, we're not planning on having this as a.
Oh, this could be a private.
Homeowners Association.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
That's one thing we got to take into consideration.
It's a burden on the town, so we're looking forward to do with that.
No, it's, it's actually a novel idea.
No, and then, and then the homeowners association will be.
To be honest with you, there's a big push for those type of HOAs in every subdivision to take care of systems and drainage. And I think it's going to become something in the future. Anytime you're building a subdivision today, there's going to be an HOA to go along with it. And that subdivision is going to be responsible for the upkeep.
So Bill, would you feel more comfortable with 24 feet pavement? I mean, 24 is standard in a lot of towns for. Yeah, this is 22. We can go 24 if you're more comfortable with that.
Yeah, 24 is a better with, it just, it kind of gives us that extra. You're talking about really a nine-foot clearance on each truck when you're done with that. So you're at 18 feet. And that having only four feet just makes it tough. But, I mean, a cistern would still be required, just not a, I wouldn't ask for a larger one. It'd be at least a 20,000 gallon.
Okay, there's actually, there might be a spring out here that we could put the cistern next to and you could pump right out of the spring.
Yeah.
Might be able to work out something like that.
Yeah, but I don't know if you get into a conservation issue with.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Oh, yeah, don't be messing with the conservation.
It's, you know, it's a man-made, it's all stones, nice and straight. They pump right, there's a pump there.
I'm going to consider, I'm going to consider this for the rest. I think we've met all the.
So I'll prepare the submission packet, all the paperwork, get it to Gail.
At this point in time, because this is a Q and A, piece of metal, Q and A. I'm not taking community questions right at this point. As we walk into the, I'd like to have the questions within the public hearing. So it, we can address them on the record. Dan, how many questions do we have? How many hands up?
I think most people are here from the last time on the agenda.
I see a couple of hands up though. Yeah, no, we'll wait till the public hearing.
And once again, this is, this is all piece of metal. I haven't submitted anything to those listening.
Yeah, so a good change.
All questions and answers that I have with the town.
What are you leaning toward, John?
No, it's the open space. So part of the open space submission is you have to show that you can do a conventional.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think.
So we would, we would want to do the open space with the small lots. And like I said, so there's approximately like 24 acres we would give to whoever wants it. If nobody wants it, then we'd leave it as, it's part of the homeowners association. I think that you can do that in the open space. And there's also another 11-acre piece that's out there across the high tension lines that is with this property. We'd include that also. So, total of about 35 acres of open space. And the last, not least.
Get those phones handed out.
There's driving range. We have some thoughts on the Menden driving range. Many of you may know, we purchased a chain of supermarkets. It's a small chain called Park and Shop. Has three stores, one in Blackstone, one in Auburn, and one in.
Isn't there one in Auburn?
Yeah, one in Auburn, one in.
There's one in Auburn.
Yeah, one in Auburn, right in Miles. And we would like to bring one to that. Pretty much because we wanted to bring the grocery store. Looking at a grocery store set in the back. This was a preliminary plan that we did, and it's about, this plan shows 5,000 square feet. We'd not go that big now that we've been running the stores for a while. It would probably be around 20,000 square feet. And this area that says retail wouldn't be retail. We would use that as a commissary for. We would use that as a commissary for the grocery store, for storage of groceries and to centralize our baking and cooking and prepared foods. That's where we would do it. We would do a pad site in the front. You know, this is, this one here was for a pharmacy. We don't know if it would be for pharmacy. We wouldn't build that right away. That would be for future, if, you know, we could get a client for that. And then on the other side, I think we have, it might be Dean Bank that's in our plaza now with like a standing building. And that would probably be like 3,500 square feet, not 72. This all has to fit on a septic system. We do have a septic system proposed. We bought the property that abuts it, which would enable us to get a public water supply, the store and the septic system. You know, we would, we would like to entertain with the town also doing a mixed-use project here. I know the town is currently looking at a mixed-use project on Route 16 on town-owned land. We'd be interested in doing an over 55 here and some retail or something. I just wanted to get some input from the board on how the board felt about it. So currently, this is, this area is on residential. It's highway business for the first 200 feet and then residential. We have all the buildings in the current driving range area that was used as a commercial use for the last, I don't know, 40 years. So it would be a special permit to change the use to a different commercial use. And then on the residential side, we would like to do something with the residential, maybe a little bit more inventive than just putting a couple of houses there. Maybe some low-income housing or not low-income, over 55 housing there. Maybe threeplexes or fourplexes, whatever the septic system would allow us to do. We just wanted some input from the town. I know there's people on board this, this meeting. I know it, I saw it on Facebook and stuff. But this was just, it was like just a meeting for me to come in and talk to the board and see how they felt about it. And I know there's people that want to talk to me, but once we submit, you will get your chance to come after me as much as you would like. But this is just a meeting that I thought I would come in front of the board and get some input on how to, how to move forward.
Well, I certainly, I mean, from a, from a planning perspective, I think I'd rather an over 55 community, I know he's got some, some money in that grocery store he bought. But I think at this point, there's more value in creating housing for over 55 or moving towards retirement age housing for the, for the town in mind because there's so little of it. So, from a planning perspective, I would like, I noticed, I mean, I had, you know, I would have said we'd take a look at some type of traffic circle out there in the front.
Yeah, so, so I have had, I have had a traffic study done on 16. It is a state highway, and I know Judy Nish is working on, they've been working on this now for two years. This was prior to our conversation about the traffic circle. And that would all have to go through Mass Highway. What you see here is, is taking part of our land in the plaza and lining up. You can see where the island on the left-hand side is extended out. It, it takes that curve out of the end of Menden Road. There would be a light there. There would be a right turn, left turn, a right turn straight and left turn on, on coming up Millville Road.
You sort of didn't answer my question. I mean, I know from, from the perspective of someone who's trying to put and drive traffic to the area for business uses. A stoplight works great because it stops everybody. From a planning perspective, I see towns that are showing substantial economic growth through traffic circles. They're also a safety feature. You know, being part of the insurance industry, I would, I would be more inclined to see a traffic circle. Now, the rest of the board can take their position on what they like, but.
No, so we'll have to look into that. They've done the traffic study. We had all of this.
I mean, I've certainly seen larger towns, you know, if you go out to Northampton, they go right in the middle of the town. I mean, right in Main Street.
Yeah, I think it would work pretty well right there.
Yeah.
So, like I said, this was done before our discussion. And that's why I'm here, to talk to you guys about that. I would have, you know, anything that is done on, on 16 has to go through Mass Highway.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're already thinking about traffic circles. If they did, you know, we would own the land on all four sides there, so we would be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the gentleman is still in charge, but I know like when they did the ones in Millbury, the gentleman was in charge. And that's why we've seen somebody creep up across the state is because he's a proponent for several reasons. You're not stopping traffic, you're creating a flow. There's a safety factor and no 90-degree angle turns. So it's obviously a.
Yeah, so we'll definitely, I'll definitely have our traffic engineers get in touch with the state.
Because I think that right here is going to, a rush hour every day is going to back up traffic in both directions.
Okay, so we'll.
Yeah, we already have a traffic problem in Menden. I'd like to slow the traffic in this area because we do have a speed issue, especially at that intersection.
Yeah, and then the fork down here is really bad.
Yeah, those two are kind of like.
Yeah.
I mean, I should have looked out my front window of my office and see those traffic.
And I believe Rob from Techatech is looking at that intersection too, to see how we can kind of fix everything at once.
Oh, it'd be great.
So, yeah, we are looking into that. Like I said, they did traffic counts. They looked at some different designs, but I will, I will have him look at a roundabout there.
Okay, so we get a lot of questions answered. So this might not even be the plan today. So like I said, and you guys can agree or disagree, but I'd look more towards some types of mixed use, you know, that have to go through special permit.
I hate to give up commercial property for mixed use.
Yeah, we talked about the commercial portion of it, and then we would do mixed use over here.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, we're mending the single rate system. I don't think either one of you lose, I think, you know, it's reasonable to.
So we're looking into.
Same recovery.
We're looking into getting some easements for the public water supply and moving the public water supply further back. That would open up some more of this land for, for whatever, apartments over 55, whatever, whatever.
Except when you say apartments.
Oh, well, over 55 condos. Let's say that.
But you have a lot of, you have a lot of stuff going on down on the town-owned property that could be, end up being over 55 also. So, I mean, I know we're trying to get some over 55 stuff going on here, but it could turn into a situation where you could end up with having more than we actually need.
The town property is costing anywhere from 100 to 200 units of over 55, which may be all the town needs. And then.
I will tell you, that type of housing is going off the market as soon as it goes on.
And then, you know, if, if something does happen down the street and we don't see a need for this, you know, there's still a chance we could leave it as, you know, we would redo the driving range as more of an amusement center or something. But right now, we're looking to put a grocery store in town. We do, you know, we, we have, you know, this, this would be an ideal spot for us. It's right across from our plaza.
Right. And I, and I don't disagree that, you know, the town, you know, can use a well-suited grocery store where the, hopefully, it's more something to the country-style look.
Absolutely. Like, all the buildings would be country-style. Any of these buildings would be country-style.
Yeah, I know, I've, I've stayed in the past. I'd like to see one. There's, there's a bunch of them out there now, obviously, Roach Brothers.
Yeah, Brothers Market.
Yeah, Brothers Market.
So that's, that's what we would model this after, that we've gone and looked at them and.
Another one out in Springfield called Fresh Acres. They're very.
So.
I was at one today.
I know there's a lot of people in town saying, I'll keep it a small town, but putting a grocery store in, in town doesn't change it from a small town to a big town. I'm from Blackstone, Brad. It's a small town and we have a grocery store. Smithville, Bridgeto's, it's a small town and they have a grocery store. It is nice having a grocery store five minutes from your house.
Especially a small, small footprint store.
We're not talking, we're not talking stop, stop and stop, short size or even the infinite size. Half, about half the size of those stores.
Yep.
Think it's a great asset to the town.
All right, I mean, I have our opinion, you know, as soon as you have a plan available. But.
But there's a bunch of different iterations of this already. This was kind of the most generic one I could bring tonight. There is, we do have some, so some units over here and some different things. So we'll make a decision, and I'm going to talk to Techatech about the roundabout and have him. Like, we're, we're doing a lot with the Mass Highway right now in Milford. It's the same people. So I'll start talking to them. We're trying to make Beaver Street a two-way. We've been working on that for a couple of years.
Yeah, it's just, Menden has a growing traffic issue, and it hasn't been as pronounced since COVID struck. But as we've returned to normalcy with house seals flying up and obviously larger developments happening, I think it's only going to be a further growing issue. And I think we need to do things to start addressing. The other thing I like about the roundabouts is the egress. We were able to control our egress is a lot better. This section always bothered me with the exit from Millville, you know, the.
Merge.
The left-hand, the left-hand exit, and then you've got your store, and then we've got Dunkin' Donuts, and they're all kind of collapsing one another. And I think in some type of traffic circle might, it'll slow the traffic down so people are getting them out. Because it's like, it's like you got to crush yourself.
Yeah, I drive it every day.
Got it.
This coming out of this fork down here is crazy, and then falling out here. It's, and if you're going left and you pull out and somebody's turning into the gas station, it's like.
Oh, yeah, it's crazy.
It is tough. I understand.
All right, I appreciate you coming, coming forward. I hope we provide you the details you needed. You know, as, as we move forward, you know, I'm sure the community is going to have a lot of questions of what your intentions are at this point in time, you know. It's only a sketch, so.
Yep. But, and like I said, I'm happy to answer everybody's questions. When we, once we submit, anybody that's still online.
I have any questions up there?
All right, there's nothing.
I know plans presented. This is just a sketch, and it's, it's probably nothing of what is going to be the final result. It's a Q, this was really a Q and A to find out what the board would be interested in doing.
We shouldn't do it, Jared?
No.
No, hold on. What do we got?
Hold on. You got to do the minutes, don't you?
We got to do the minutes, yeah. You got to go. You can go. Questions are there, Dan? I mean, this is, questions now would be, would be, you know, wouldn't be inclusive of anything that's going to happen in the future. I mean, this plan could be a type of. Yeah. Yeah, we haven't received a formal application yet, so.
But everyone in the room could see it, and everyone on the phone could not. But everyone in the room could see it, and everyone on the phone could not.
You want to do the minutes?
Yeah, we'll do the minutes. Yeah, but I, I don't have my copy with me.
I have, we feel...
See, we're not on the table.
Oh, you should take a moment.
15 of them.
I use, I use...
All right, you have said things, we can, uh, please...
I'll second.
Thank you. One of those, hold on, anyone please? All right, we need to approve the minutes of the, uh...
Eight, I took off.
Just did it, Barry.
Yeah, the February 8th meeting, uh... Who am I hearing background noise from, is that you, Damon?
Barry just made the motion, and I just seconded him.
Okay, just second, all those in favor?
Okay, which one are we doing?
The 8th.
Oh, who made motion?
John made the motion, Damon seconded it, yeah.
John, okay, Damon seconds?
Yeah.
So, everything was okay on there, I didn't miss anything?
I read them, I didn't see anything.
No, I didn't see, I didn't notice anything, it seemed pretty good.
I pat myself on the back on that one.
I mean...
Damon seconds, was anybody absent on that day?
James.
I was.
Okay, I, James...
All those in favor?
John, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Bill, aye.
I was absent, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, now, February...
James was absent. Make a motion to accept the meetings for 12, February 22nd, 2021 is ready.
Second.
All those in favor?
Second, okay.
Barry.
James, aye.
John, aye.
Barry, aye.
Bill, aye.
Damon, aye.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Barry, aye.
John, aye.
Bill, aye.
James, aye.
Damon, aye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.